Okay, we'll now call the regular meeting of council June the fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. To order, please. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I moved to approve the agenda with the following amendments. That eleven A should read by law number sixteen dash twenty nineteen. Amendments to a bylaw establishing the code of conduct for council third reading by title in summary and enactment. And two, the date for the next meeting should be July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Okay, need a motion to adopt the minutes of the May seventeenth. Oh, sorry, yeah, just getting ahead of myself. Any questions on the approval of the agenda? Any discussion?
This is all point of information. I don't seem to have the actual agenda itself in my agenda pack.
If you want one, there's one right around the corner.
No, here's.
Alex Young. Thanks. Thank you.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded, motion carried. Thank you. Okay, item three is adoption of the minutes of the regular meeting of council, May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three.
I move to adopt the minutes of the May seventeen, twenty twenty-three regular meeting of council.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor of adopting the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded, motion carried. I need them.
I'll move to adopt the minutes of May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, special meeting of council.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded, motion carried. Thank you. No public input tonight?
Yeah, I just have one question. Wants to know, I know there was some discussion in prior meetings about hiring of an independent third-party reviewer. And one question, did the mayor, CIO, deputy mayor have any involvement in the selection hiring process of the reviewer or the investigator that was retained from the McGinnis Cooper law firm, the so-called third-party reviewer, independent reviewer?
I have the answer to that question, but I would like it in email to the acting CIO. Then we can give you an actual written response, so you can have it for your records.
Okay, that's all I want to know.
Okay. Nothing else? Any disclosures, council? You're good. Okay, reports, Chief Kreuz for the fire report.
I didn't eat coffee from the south. But it was May was a busy month. I'm going to ask you to fight. On that sheet there, it's on both sides. Do not fire the issue paper.
Yes, indeed. Any questions for Chief Kreuz? Okay. Can I get a motion to receive the fire report as presented? Second.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded, motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, chief. Appreciate you showing up on this beautiful night. I know that place is you'd probably rather be.
I'm gonna go over the trading question now. I'm not sure if this is where I bring it up or not. Next year or so, we should be looking at replacing trucks. One for sure. Because it's two thousand and two. And to keep our insurance rating up and stop, can't be more than twenty years old.
Okay. Is it like a pumper or?
It's a, it's a pumper. It's not one of the engines. The engines, we, we call the engines first out truck, next one, which basically set up the same there, we're calling them pumpers, but we got one that's getting up there in age.
So it's still similar to like the attack trucks, but basically it's just like eleven hundred gallons.
It'd be eleven hundred gallons, yeah.
Sometime when you get a chance, could you put a proposal together and get it into our CIO, acting CIO? So we can get on to that right away and get it into next year's budget?
Yeah, because if you order now, you're looking at next year anyway before the, think about it. Even with the cabin chassis.
Oh, yeah. Now, are they still made up in the other side of the town?
Metal fat, we can get tenders, I guess, from other outfits, but metal fat seems to be bothering the province first thing.
That's important.
And they're only an hour away, so if we have a problem or anything like that.
They can act on it immediately.
Yeah, because if we start going outside the province, then.
And you're getting into all kinds of issues.
Yes, and all kinds of stuff could happen to us.
No, I realize, of course, things have gone up considerably. Do you have any idea, like ballpark, what something like that would cost?
I'm gonna say between three fifty and four.
So that's.
Chassis, chassis, two fifty, yeah.
Definitely something we have to, you know, put in the twenty twenty-four budget for sure. Well, thanks for bringing that forward, chief.
Yeah, I just wanted to make it aware that we should like.
Got a plan for the future.
We're gonna have to do that every year, like, to keep up with the day.
Well, you gotta keep things rolling and keep it modern and keep it working, right?
Yeah, that's right. That's right, so. Anyway, that's what we'll do.
All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Good evening, Felix.
Have a good night, chief. Again, thanks for coming.
No problem.
Oh, you can stay if you want to see Mr. Divenvorden's presentation, by the way.
I, I heard all the voters.
You already had the feeling. We just don't want to drive you away, that's all.
We had the other one.
Thanks, chief.
No problem.
So, Mr. Divenvorden, I guess you're next.
Very good. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, members of the council. You're super efficient, because here I am, item seven, and my clock says seven oh seven. And that's pretty darn good, one item for a minute. That's a burnout, an agenda, I guess, burn through an agenda. It's my pleasure to be here, just briefly to speak about, maybe hit start, stopwatch. Let me hit, sorry, it's my pleasure to be here, just briefly to speak about a sustainability issue, a sustainability initiative that I've been leading in our community, our end of the community. And given that we're married now, we're all together, and we'd like to grow and, and, and build that togetherness going forward. Maybe sow some ideas for how we can do, do something like that going forward, and maybe a few other sustainability initiatives. But the first thing I just wanted to talk about, and I guess it was the main thing that brought me here tonight, was a community cleanup that I started coordinating last year. And it went really well last year, so I did it again this year. And I have a few slides, and Sherry, maybe the first one, just to show basically how it went. The idea of it was using our Facebook pages, and unfortunately, over in Kings Clear, we have two Facebook pages, so it means you enter on both, because different people are on different ones. But it was essentially run over social media. The idea being that people could choose one area of the community, one section of road, basically take ownership of that, and over a period of about two weeks, commit to cleaning it up. And this was just one of the images that I put up for this year's second edition of it. Basically updated the date on it, put it out there, put a nice positive blurb inviting people to sign up. And I said, look, I'll keep track of the, all of the areas to make sure we don't have overlap or duplication, and that we try to fill in all of the gaps, and I'll keep you posted on things. So that was the first entry that went. And the next one was this one, or sorry, actually, this was a little bit of the backing I had behind it, because I like spreadsheets, keeping things organized. So this was in the Excel spreadsheet, where on the left side, you can see the different areas that people signed up for. And then the second column is who signed up? And the areas could change, because some people would say, well, from my driveway down to the fire hall, for example. So we said, okay, that's the section that just got used up. And, and, and we work it from there, and hopefully try to stitch everything together. And try to add a few other elements of it too, in that I wonder, I, I had a couple of other columns indicated that where, was it posted on the Facebook that this area was already taken, so that everybody else could look and know? Did I get a signal that it's actually been done? And the date it was done, and the amount they collected, just for stat purposes? And did they share a picture? Because I invited people to get engaged and share your pictures, put them up on there. And also I asked them, did you find anything weird? Because it's kind of cool to put on, yeah, I found an old shoe, or I found a, you know, a piece of a rototiller, or who knows what you would find. So that was the info collection I had behind it. Sherry, the next one. Interesting that this year, someone came back to me, and it was an idea from the community that they want to clean up a portion of the shoreline of Kelly Creek. I thought, isn't that cool? I was thinking, just in the space of roadside cleanups, but somebody came back and said shoreline, which is, which is just as viable as an initiative. So they ended up being the only ones doing shoreline. But you know, I thought, going forward, that'd be a nice element to keep into it. So this was the backing behind it. Then, then, basically, I just put out the postings on a, on, let's say, a weekly or semi-weekly basis. Pick a section, clean that section, win a box. That was a simple message. The, the, the aim of being simple, easy to remember, and would resonate with people. And by the way, this time I figured I better update that. It's not just Upper Kings Clear, it's Melville, Kings Clear Island View. That was the, the area we were covering. So, so, you know, just a little bit of, a few pictures in the background to, to make it interesting. And then when we got some photos, oh, we put those up as well in it. Again, just striving to engage the community a bit more. Go ahead, Sherry. And, well, we had a few prizes, because I've been promising prizes, that, well, it's time to announce to everybody. What are the prizes? So a couple of restaurant gift cards and a couple of coffee cards. And then finally, when it all wrapped up, it ran for about two weeks, then finally, a big, just a big thank you to everyone who took part, announcing who were the prize winners, announcing the status of the trash total, that kind of thing. So this was the second year running. I would say last year was probably more successful, and it's mostly on me, because last year I had more time to put into it. This year I ended up just being a little bit late starting, I think, and I didn't quite have the time available to do all of the, as many posts as I, as I would have liked to have. But overall, like, last year, there was not, if, if everybody did what they said they did, in all of Maswell Settlement, Island View, and Route one oh two, every, every stretch of road was covered, which I thought was kind of cool. Which is pretty neat. This year we did end up having gaps. I attribute it again more to me being a bit late. But the thing is, obviously, there was another event going on here this year. And I only found out about that, I think, when this one was already launched, and I thought, oh, we're one community. I'd really liked for us to work as one, you know? And then I thought, well, this was a great initiative here too. So maybe it is for future discussion to think, which of these approaches can work? Or how can we bring the best of both?
Yeah, or both, right?
Some, somewhere. Potentially, yeah, that's right. So, so I thought, maybe a few discussion points that, that we might want to think about. Should it be a one-day event, or should, should it be longer? The one here was one day, I think, and it meant that everybody had one day ingrained, which was very good. Our, the, the one in our community was a window of two, two and a half weeks, something like that. Advantage of that might be that people can do things on their own time. You know, some people I know did the roads, because they said, I go for that walk every day, so that's my route. And it worked out well, and families.
There's actually three, because there's also one at Yole Lake, too.
Oh, yeah, a different cleanup again.
A different cleanup again.
Right, and they're within our.
Yes.
So it's.
So the three would be great.
If, if we can work it together, yeah. And again, I offer these points as, as things to think about for future ones. So should it be a one-day event, or should it be longer? And there may be, there, I think there are pros for both to think about. Should it be community, or, in other words, everybody show up and we'll meet at the schoolyard, and then we'll, we'll set out from there? Or should it be more targeted to individuals and families stepping up? What about, do we need dumpsters? I think that was a key part of the strategy here, dumpster setup here. There was one at our fire hall on the other end of the mess as well, I believe, and then maybe a third somewhere, for people to dispose of what they collected. In our case, everybody just, I'd offer a garbage bag, but nobody's ever taken me up on that. They just use their own garbage bags, and they put it out at the curb with their own trash. You know, if they only collected two or three bags, let's say, it easily went on garbage day. So, assigned sections or open? I think the assigned sections piece works nicely, because it prevents overlap. Because people would get frustrated quickly if they say, I'll do that street and the other, and there's nothing to collect. Wasting their time. On the other hand, so assigned sections is nice, but on the other hand, takes a little more management, that's for sure.
For sure.
You know, because then you have to make sure, oh, everybody has to know that section is now assigned. And, and maybe there are apps and ways to do this, I'm not sure. For someone who's wise with IT.
Spreadsheet was a great idea.
So could do some kind of a live map, where you go in and pick your own section. I mean, that'd be awesome. Maybe it exists out there. I've never pursued it, and I'm not the most IT savvy person. So maybe it is out there. And then finally, safety considerations. In our case, I just put it out to everyone to say, look, be careful out there, because you're on your own doing this. Wear whatever colors you need. Stay off the road, have a spotter for traffic if you need. Be careful out there. And that was kind of the extent of it. It's all gone well so far.
It's a little difficult on the one oh two, girl, like ninety kilometers per hour, and they're just going so fast.
I know last year we had a group of the cadets that had volunteered to do significant stretches of that. And for each group wandering in the ditch, we had a spotter on the road. Yeah, just to say, look, someone keep an eye on the traffic here, that'll make sure everybody gets off.
Good idea.
As well.
And you know how they have traffic signs, they'll put signs at the end of the, on six forty? Because they would do a section of that, too.
Right.
At the beginning and at the end, kind of just warn people there.
Right, and on the one oh two last year with the cadets, there were signs put up as well.
Pretty good.
So those are essentially the, the points I wanted to cover about the cleanup. And I'm not sure where it goes from here, whether the, the cleanup from this year initiated, was initiated here, if it was a citizen letter, if there's a committee. But I thought, you know, maybe those are some points for discussion for a nice unified way going forward. Make it community-wide, and really, you know, make a big splash and have fun with it. And while I have your attention, I thought, okay, one more slide. And I was, perhaps, I, I'd like to just put it out there. I think we, as a new community, have a lot of potential to do some nice things in the, in the area of sustainability. So I just put a few bullet points here, and I thought, maybe they could somehow appear on your agenda going forward. I'm guessing we don't have a community climate action plan yet. There are a lot of them out there now, and they have things like net zero goals, but they may also have other sustainability goals. There are lots of models out there. They can be pretty simple, or they can be more complicated as well. But maybe something for us to do as Hanwell. Improving recycling participation, maybe we can do some messaging around there. I know I've walked around our neighborhood on recycling day, not recently, but a few years ago, just for my own checking. And I think we were only about one-third participation. And I'm thinking, I know we always applaud, bravo, everybody, for doing what really wants to do, we can do way better, right? And I'm not sure what it's like in, in Hanwell, that was on the Maswell Settlement Road in my neighborhood. You know, maybe there's an opportunity there with good messaging. Transportation is such a huge part of our carbon footprint, so a way to organize carpooling. Because that's where big, big carbon savings can come, right? If you can turn four cars into one, and four dollars into one for gas. There's a, checks a lot of boxes that way. And I think there's a lot of money in Ottawa these days for public transit, and maybe even some creative solutions for small communities like ours. I think Merrimashie has a couple of small buses that run back and forth. And I think PEI is going with island-wide transit, you know, if you knew the rural PEI.
For two bus.
Why not us here? I'm not sure what type of equipment it is. I'm sorry.
In, in PEI, it's two dollars. Two dollars gets you, they'll pick you up right at your house, takes you to a hub. Now, the two dollars to get to the next hub, the hubs are the major centers, so it's pretty inexpensive.
Pretty crazy, yeah. If we could make that work, you know, and I'm not sure if it would, but maybe it's worth looking into. I think there's a big public educational, energy efficiency. Several people go, well, the open house that we had with our solar. Because I sense there's a big hunger out there, and there's big potential as well. Electric vehicles, solar energy, energy efficiency, that's, there's so much low-hanging fruit out there in terms of saving energy. Guidance, maybe on programs and incentives, because there's some really good ones out there now for our citizens to know, hey, these programs are out there, use them. And you'll, you'll come out ahead, and it's a good thing for sustainability, too. Communication via the website, newsletter, maybe community gardens. I'm getting the sense that there's more interest these days in people getting a bit more control of their food and, and growing their own food, knowing where it comes from, and saving money too. And then finally, public engagement, maybe a sustainability committee, and maybe we find that, look, when we put the word out, tons of people are interested enough to become involved, and look, more people, more ideas, more engagement, more progress. So I, this thing says twelve minutes, I've gone wrong. But that was the, that was the last slide that I had. And I welcome any, any questions or comments anyone has. And really, I wanted to put these other ideas, first, I wanted to share the, the, the past activities we've had. And then just share a few ideas that I hope can stimulate some good discussion here and move some progress in our community.
Because we certainly appreciate you taking this on. It's a major task, but it, it shows when you drive through the community of just how much better they'd like the, along the roads look. Because people, it's, I don't know if it's education or what, but the people still throw out, you see the, you know, the coffee cups, like you had a picture there. Styrofoam cups, for goodness sakes. I mean, they were there until somebody basically picks them up, and the other little, what are they called, little drinking boxes there.
It's no, yeah, touchbacks.
Yeah, yeah, and you see that stuff still, even today, you know, it's all over the roads within the community. It's just, I don't know, there should be some more community pride, and, you know, throw your stuff in the car and throw it in the garbage when you get home. So, but this is a really great initiative, and we certainly appreciate you, you know, organizing something like that. And hopefully next year we can do it bigger and better.
Yeah, and I'd be interested in being involved too, you know, in, in a community-wide. Because again, I think it's really important. We're together as an entity. Let's, let's gel that.
That's right. Perfect.
Thank you for the community awareness. You're doing well by the way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again for your attention, and thanks for your service here, because it's a nice night. I get to go rest today a little.
Well, you can, you can stay.
Supper's week. Thank you very much.
Thanks again, appreciate it. All right, moving on, item eight, building applications. There's fifteen permits. I did rough math, I'm correct, around three million dollars for the month of May, so that's a, that's a substantial amount. It's a really big pickup from the previous months. So it's, it's nice to see, there should be new houses and stuff being built up. No proclamations tonight, no petitions and delegations, if I'm aware of. So item eleven, business arising, we have bylaw sixteen dash twenty nineteen. Amendments to bylaw establishing the code of conduct for council third reading by title in summary and enactment.
Okay, I'd like to move that bylaw number sixteen dash twenty nineteen amendments to bylaw establishing the code of conduct for council be given its third reading by title, written in summary, and enacted. I'll second.
Okay, questions, concerns, comments?
Can I ask a couple of technical questions first, before we talk about the actual bill itself?
Yeah, this is a good time.
It, it, it's about this, it's germane. So this is now official record? The document you handed here tonight?
It's, I just done it today, and I gave a copy to Sharon, so we'll have it in the correspondence.
So this will be for tonight, it'll be a public record?
Yes.
So you just got it today?
Yes.
And McGinnis Cooper's the law firm that you've both used for this?
Yes, they're the guys that we actually hired the investigators.
So a technical question on the budget. Who's authorizing, I recognize you both spending a lot, let's, let's just call it a spade a spade here. You're spending a lot of money on me with lawyers. Who's authorized this? Did we go over a budget yet? Because I don't ever remember one person authorizing us to spend any money on lawyers. But it seems like this municipality, and I remember the own time that I had devoted on, is going to lawyers to spend money on it. So who's authorizing the expenses?
It all comes from the original authorization back when we hired a lawyer to hire an outside investigator.
So the McGinnis Cooper hired the outside investigator, which was McGinnis Cooper?
No, we hired McGinnis Cooper.
To hire McGinnis Cooper, MC Advisory Coop is McGinnis Cooper, MC Advisory, they're an affiliate of?
No.
Yes.
Not that I'm aware of.
They are.
They are? Yes, so you hired the law firm, hired the law firm to come after me, and now you're spending more money in the law firm. And who are, who's authorizing this money?
We.
I asked for a six hundred dollar dog pin, and everybody's questioning, oh, I gotta see what it's gonna look like. And you folks are just allocating all the money that we have, so how much did we spend so far?
This is just a continuation of the same.
So you're just gonna carry on until you're done personally using laws, the lawyers, for your folks' edifice?
Well, it's to keep us out of trouble, hopefully. That's why you bring lawyers.
Well, it's bringing you into trouble, whether you recognize it or not. I'm gonna step back from that one. I'm gonna let the code of conduct, there is a lot of issues I have in here, whether it was about me or not. There's a lot of things that you folks may have admitted to that you may not have recognized, but I appreciate you do recognizing that you did have an issue the first time. If somebody else wants to speak, but I do want to speak about the actual steps on the bylaw shortly.
I have a question. So.
Let's start, like I said.
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
You're gonna defer?
I just wanted to get the technical question about who's authorizing these payments to the lawyers that's outside of our budget.
Right, so I'm gonna start at this end of the table then. I'll start with Councilor Fox, if he has any comments, concerns on the bylaw, then I'll move on to.
Okay, Councilor Highsley.
Yeah.
So this is basically, this amendment is removing seventeen C and adding onto seventeen E. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so personally, I can't support the removal of seventeen C, which states, used to state that council does not have the authority to disqualify or remove a member from office. So, um, I had contacted local government and was told that council does not have the authority to remove a member from office.
That's why we went with a question from, there's so many questions being put out by so many different people contacting government, rather than put them all through one entity. Then we get several different answers. So that's why it's gone from a lawyer to get an interpretation, because they, obviously, they paid attention, they wrote back to them.
But all they're saying is that the minister can't.
All they're saying is the minister can't, but we can impose bylaws to enforce bylaws.
Well, according to local government, we cannot contravene the local governance act.
That's right. Like I said before, if the act doesn't speak to it, then our bylaws will be empowered.
The act does speak to it.
Point of order, are you chairing? If not, you can pass the chair, you can pass the devil off to the chairman, just as a point of order, and then you can, you can continue to debate.
Anyway, I, I firmly believe that we are contravening the local governance act. According to what they talked to me about, that there is no authority to remove someone from office. The minister can't remove somebody from office, nor can council. Council does not have the authority to remove an elected official from office. That's what I was told. So I cannot support that addition or removal. And I also can't support the addition of the investigation being done in closed session. As I really don't believe it's a labor and employment matter. I know that it has been discussed in the past, and the interpretation is, but elected officials are not employees. So having these enclosed sessions gives the perception that council is not being transparent. And we are basically creatures of the province, and therefore, we have to follow certain acts. And we aren't, this one, I firmly believe that it should not be done in closed session. It should be done in open session, we're going to have investigation. We are not, we are not employees. Anyway, that's all I'm gonna say to it, but I kept talking.
Okay, moving on to Deputy Mayor Jonah.
Would anyone like me to read the, this interview of minutes?
Sure.
Okay, all right, I'll start with the letter from McGinnis, or from McGinnis Cooper to honorable Daniel Land, the minister.
A point of order, can we see the letter that was written to the lawyers, please?
Yeah, you have it.
No, no. What was the letter sent by you folks to the lawyers that responded to this?
I believe it was just an ass.
Well, I, I'd like to see the letter. Can we have that for this as well?
I don't think there is a letter that I've seen or wrote.
The lawyer just didn't use a Ouija board to figure this out.
No, he, I, he would have been asked to.
You must have sent the letter to the lawyers, asking what you're looking for.
I think it was a verbal request.
Thank you. Chair, I apologize.
Yeah, no problem.
Dear Mr., this is written by our lawyer, Chris Belkey, from McGinnis Cooper. Dear Mr. Land, I hope this letter came to you well. I'm writing you on behalf of rural community of Hamel recently. Council has informed me that they are experiencing difficulties to find their members, including breaches of the Hamel code of conduct by law and municipal confidentiality generally, sorry. Counselor has informed me that they have had preliminary discussions with officers of the Department of Environment and local government, who have informed them that municipality possesses a delegated authority to unseat the counselor, to unseat a council member. Additionally, and based on this advice, council has initiated the process of ending this bylaws to include the power to dismiss or unseat a member. Accordingly, we kindly request that you, your assistance in confirming the municipality's authority to include the power to unseat a member in its code of conduct by law, and its authority to exercise such power as viewed by the minister and the province. Considering the importance of this matter to the community, it is essential to seek clarity on the issue from a provincial perspective. We understand that demands of the minister's time and appreciate your attention to this matter. However, we believe that your response is critical to ensure the municipality's actions are legally sound and aligned with the government legislation. Your guidance and clarification on these issues will not, will not only assist the municipality in making informed decisions, will also provide reassurance to council in ensuring that the interests of the community are duly protected. We sincerely appreciate your attention to this matter, and eagerly await your response. Should you require any additional information or have further inquiries, please not hesitate to contact me or write me off. Uh, or via email, that's pretty self, um, you can go to mcginniscouper.com. And that was sent on May thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. He, um, got a reply, and CUN says, he got the reply on June ninth, we received the letter after that. Dear Mr. Belkey, thank you for your email on May thirtieth, twenty twenty-three regarding a local government's authority to remove a councillor, a mem, a council member from office. Further to your questions relating to advice from staff provided to the rural community regarding a local government's authority to remove a council member, is not the practice of the department to provide legal interpretation of the Local Governance, Governance Act. Section ten two B of the Act states that the local government shall make a bylaw establishing a code of conduct for members of council and requirements of the bylaw are prescribed by regulation, Code of Conduct, Local Governance Act, Regulation twenty eighteen dash sixty-four. Under section ten one R of the Act, the local government may make bylaws for municipal purposes respecting the enforcement of its bylaws made under the Act. I am not aware of any provisions in the Act that provide the authority of the minister to remove the council member from office. Citerally, Daniel Land, Minister of Local Government, the Governance Act.
Did you have any other comments other than just reading that letter?
Uh, no, actually, I don't think we did now.
So moving on to councillor Seppin.
Thank you, deputy mayor, for reading that in. First, I'd like to point out again for a bit of process, we got this three, four minutes before we sat down.
I just got it today.
I respect that, but we don't have time to read this, so if anybody would, fellows must know this off the top because we're gonna be shoving this through tonight. Please tell me where it says the Code of Conduct Regulation, Local Government Act Regulation two thousand eighteen sixty-four, what does that stand for? Specifically, section ten dash one dash R. We need time to be reading this stuff if they're gonna be sending a response. Second, if the minister doesn't even have the authority to remove a councillor, you folks feel like you folks, uh, can, which is disconcerting in and out of itself. In the letter, it also says, council has informed me, I do not believe council has informed you that you wanted this, the vote was coming tonight. How did you folks get ahead of this? But I digress, we will ignore the process, uh, issues in a little bit. And then you can't have your, have your cake and eat it too, I don't know how that saying goes, but you can have it, have it too. And one time you're fighting the labor board saying, I'm not an employee. At the same time, I'm fighting with them and you folks, so you folks don't have to pay me remuneration, remuneration, whatever that word is. Then you're also stating this thing is because I'm a HR person, it has to be done in private. You can't have it both ways, and I'm looking forward to bringing this up when I go into the appeals court with you folks. Now, the other thing I'd like to point out about this particular thing, even if, even if I agreed, and this is, I absolutely do not agree, but even if I agreed that you should have the right to fire somebody, I do not believe I did anything wrong, but I'm gonna step that one back for a second, even if you still have, you changed step one, that an informal process can actually lead to firing. And that can be exceptionally abused, in government, you can't have stuff like that. You, you have now changed that the informal process is literally what you've done to me, but now you put it in writing, and I appreciate you put it in writing for legal reasons. That can be abused, you have to make sure that the worst that you can do under an informal process is reprimand or a letter of something. You can't have it that somebody's gonna lose pay for eight months. You can't have it that they could be fired, which is literally what's happening here. Now, as for the code of conflicts against me, I think there's a misunderstanding about what the code of conflict is. You folks think that it is fealty to you? I do not agree with that, I'm allowed to dissent, I'm allowed to speak up. And by the way, if you look before November tenth, you probably didn't see me doing much about it, I'm only now defending myself, and I will defend myself, make no mistake, and I told you that I would. I have never not done a single thing, I wouldn't promise, and I didn't promise I was gonna do. I will defend myself, this invariably is gonna go to court, but I'd like to see a couple of things done, which we've gotta stop with the legal, uh, lawyers until we authorize more spending on it, because I don't know what we spent so far. I don't know where it is on the budget. I'm gonna be known for this for a plethora of reasons, but mostly, there's a lot of legal issues that is opening Pandora's box in this, thank you.
Councillor begins it.
Okay, so, just a quick thing, Russ, one of the things that you said there, um, as far as the, the reasons why the code of conduct happened in the first place, I think the councillor Seppin is still misunderstanding this, even though it hasn't explained multiple times in the past. It is not because of something that was said, it is because of the way it was said and the method to which it was delivered. I've said that multiple times in the past, it's been said over and over, for whatever reason, he chooses not to listen or just doesn't understand that, and that's fine, I don't, I don't really care. I expect this to go to court, as far as the costs go, the municipality has to defend itself, and if, um, if things would stop happening to cause the costs to keep escalating, we would no longer have to keep doing so, for one reason or another. And as far as the, um, the issues over people being, uh, councillors being dismissed, councillors have actually been dismissed, um, under section fifty of the Local Governance Act within New Brunswick. And, uh, in fact, it's something that I, since I expected there'll be a long, when we get to the actual policy, I have a rather two-page letter roughly to, uh, read into the minutes, because I expected there'd be a counter letter, uh, to go with it. But, um, there, this definitely is in new legal territory in some places, and I think that we're setting precedent here. Fully expect this to go to court. I believe, I'll get into this later, of course, but, um, I'm certainly not a lawyer, but things done, I'm quite good at, um, reading and interpreting laws, and have gone over the Local Governance Act many times, and with what precedent has been set under section fifty of the Act elsewhere in the province, and in fact, even within, like, Canada, it was started in New Brunswick, um, I think that we stood, standing here on the ground, but, um, I guess we'll find out in court to see where that actually goes. But, uh, I think that addresses most of things in there. Yeah, I think that's pretty much all I have to say about it.
Okay, councillor Krebs.
Yep, no problem.
And councillor Pat.
I wish I had no comment, but I feel it's important to, um, because I have the ability to speak to this, I will choose to use that ability. As all of you know, both councillor Krebs and I were not here on the council for the bulk of what's occurred on this file with this matter. It makes it doubly difficult then because I haven't experienced what you have experienced. I have read the bylaws, I've read the revised bylaws over and over again. I've listened to all of your comments as we've done work together regarding this issue. And I have inquired several times for confirmation of what part of the Local Governance Act gives us guidance about removing a councillor. And while I thank you for sending that, those details to me, councillor McKenzie, I read it, and not being a lawyer, I couldn't take anything out of that to answer that question. Does that allow us guidance in this matter? And you've mentioned you'll read something to that effect later, so I'll be interested in that. I do appreciate the letter from McGinnis Cooper, but it is so unusual to think that a government department drafts legislation, the legislature, governing parties, opposition and the like, then discuss that, yet the Department of Local Government does not interpret that act for municipalities that then have to act with that as guidance. We're just in no man's, no woman's, no person's land, la-la land, it seems to me. And councillor Seppin, I understand your concerns and the way you feel your personal interpretation of all of this is what will guide you going forward as it's guided you in the past. I have said that it's the definition of insanity to do the same thing over and over again with no change in behavior, and really, that's where we're at, because you've got all these codes of conduct following the bylaw procedures and there's no change. I think we're beyond, well, just do what has been asked of you to knowing that you disagree with that and disagree with the act. Ask pardon me of you to do that, so I'm getting into more la-la. Um, however, it does say in the Local Governance Act that if there's nothing in the Local Governance Act about a matter that comes to a municipal council, the bylaw of the municipal council drafted by the councillors, elected by the residents, will stand. And that is where we're at with this revision. That's all I have now to guide you. And so I'm moving my personal opinions about what has gone on in the past that I don't have any experience with to relying on that. Thanks.
Okay, well said, okay, so everybody had a, a chance to, uh, say their comments and whatnot, so we'll move on to the, uh, enactment?
We'll ask the vote.
Yeah.
I thought you had to read it first, but anyway, okay.
There's a vote and then it's read.
Okay, so all those, uh, no other questions concerned then from the group? All those in favor of, uh, changing the bylaw sixteen twenty nineteen amendments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded?
Nay.
Okay, so obviously the ayes have it, I'll get the clerk to record the, uh, the ayes and the nays, so we'll have it for the record.
Okay, uh, changes in summary, section three now includes the term for chief administrative officer, CAO, means the CAO of the rural community of Hamel, as appointed by the Minister of Local Government and Local Governments reform in accordance with section eighty-one of the Act from January first twenty, January first twenty twenty-three and on, changes to the CAO of section will be appointed by council. Uh, section four is a spelling error correcting the word council. Section five is, again, spelling error corrections of council to lowercase and made consistent throughout. In section G, the quotes are removed around the word alliances and councillors is made lowercase. In section six, on the confidentiality section, uh, council is changed to member of council to keep it consistent through the document, as is in section A. In sections B and C, it changes from to disclose to disclosing for proper grammar. Section seven is not actually changed yet, so we'll do that. Section eleven is, um, correcting the spelling of mayor and council and keeping it consistent in sections E and F, members of council. Section twelve, the same, keeping consistency with spelling and grammar in A, C, D, E, F, and G. Thirteen has no changes, fourteen has no changes, fifteen has the additional spelling error, uh, spelling corrections for council to lowercase. Section sixteen, uh, same thing, council changed to lowercase to keep consistent. Section seventeen, again, with spelling and grammar, keeping consistent with of council, lowercase. Section seventeen C is removed, section seventeen D has of council, changed to lowercase. Section seventeen E is added. Uh, any reported violations of this code will be subject to an investigation by council. This investigation shall be done in closed session pursuant to section sixty-eight one J of the Local Governance Act, labor and employment matters, including the negotiation of a collective agreement. Council may choose to send the investigation to an independent third party. Uh, sections eighteen, section eighteen has, uh, spelling changed to members of council, lowercase. And sections nineteen and twenty have no changes. Schedule A also has no changes. That's it.
Okay, moving on to item C, uh, rescind motion ten dash one dash twenty twenty-three. I need a mover and a secondary, please. See?
Can you be first?
Be first.
Be first. Sorry, rescind motion twenty-seven dash zero four dash twenty twenty-two, so I need a motion to, uh, rescind the motion?
I will, um, give you a second, I'm sorry, I will, duh, 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 move to rescind motion number twenty-seven dash zero four dash twenty twenty-two.
Have a secondary?
I'll second. And, uh, just to explain to the, the public and to anyone that might listen, what's actually happening here while we're doing this, so we're changing, uh, during a, um, a working section of the Local Governance Committee with all of council, we've decided to change the name of the procedural bylaw. Uh, currently it says proceedings of council and sta, and staff. We're changing it just to a bylaw respecting the proceedings of council. And if you change the name of a bylaw, you're in effect not amending it anymore, you're actually creating a new bylaw. So to do that, we have to rescind the existing one and now enact the new one with a repeal and replace. But the repeal and replace can't be done until third reading, because if we repeal it right now, we would have no existing procedural bylaw council in which to follow. So technically, the repeal of the first and second readings of, um, look, existing bylaw for procedural that we've done, didn't have to be done tonight, it could be done on the same night, though we do the third reading and repeal and replace. But it was just, um, it's okay to get them out of the way, it doesn't really matter. At some point, though, repeals, rescind of the motions for first and second reading of the existing bylaw have to be rescinded, so we can do the repeal, replace with the new version of the new-named procedural bylaw, which we'll get to in section eleven D in a moment. Hopefully that's clear.
I need a secondary.
I second.
Yeah, we have a second.
I just wanted to explain during the discussion, things why we're reading.
Which is a good idea for certain, okay, any questions, concerns? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Motion carried. Item C is rescind motion, uh, ten dash zero one dash twenty twenty-three.
I need a mover and a secondary. I guess I can do that too, so I move to rescind motion, uh, ten dash zero one dash twenty twenty-three.
I'll second.
Okay, any questions, concerns? Councillor Pkins, did you have anything to add on this one?
Sorry?
Did you have anything to add on this one?
No, it's just the second part of the first thing we had, there was two readings, so this, one was for the first reading, this one's for the second reading.
Okay, very good, so, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you.
And, uh, for, well, eleven D, do you want, I can read that, I'm gonna roll them as we go. I move that bylaw thirty dash twenty twenty-three, a bylaw respecting the proceedings of council be given first reading by title. I'll second.
Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Motion carried.
Okay, bylaw thirty dash twenty twenty-three, a bylaw respecting the proceedings of council.
Okay, and item E, amendments to the committee policy, I need a mover and a secondary for the policy twenty fourteen dash zero one, committee policy.
I move to adopt the amendments to the policy twenty fourteen dash zero one, committee policy.
I'll second.
Any questions?
I have some questions.
Okay. Councillor Highslip, I'll give you the floor.
Thank you. I sent in an email, um, to all of council addressing a few things that I think we should have included in our committee policy. They're basically to do with, um, committee composition and how many chairs are appointed to these committees. And I did apologize because it was after the deadline of June first. Um, and I, but I do believe they're easy fixes, they're not, um, they're not, you know, onerous tasks. Um, however, councillor McKenzie responded, um, was that the revisions could wait um, until the next revision of the document, um, as any more changes would be holding up the process, or they could be addressed in the procedural bylaw when it's amended. My intention was not to perpetually extend things from being completed, as you stated, councillor McKenzie. With all due respect, um, I found that a little bit, um, over the top. Our procedural bylaw does not speak to the changes I suggested, and our committee policy is supposed to support our bylaw. And I believe the changes are warranted, and it's really not, um, like I said, onerous, it's not going to make a huge difference, um, if we wait, um, one more month. Um, I believe that as councillors, setting policies is important, and we should be working together so that our policies reflect accurately what council's expectations are. so that our policies reflect accurately what council's expectations are.
Yes, Counselor McKenzie.
So thanks for the clarification there on that because this is something that's happened in the past and it's something I do have a real problem with. But I think most of the suggestions that you have made would probably be better addressed in the overall procedural bylaw than they would in the committee policy. And the reason being that they may apply to multiple committees, not just specific committees. That's something we could address in the next working session, really, to see what place would be better for them. Would it be better to put them into the committee policy specifically? Or would it be better to have them overall in the committee section of the procedural bylaw? That's my take on that.
Again, this is a living document, so it's a policy we can make changes as we move along.
Correct, it's a bylaw, so it's not a bylaw, sorry, it's a policy. So it can be changed basically just a motion.
Yeah, with the first, second, and third readings.
Though it would be nice to have some kind of a software so we could keep track of the revision so we always make sure. Because I think someone's already picked up on this once, at least once in the past, that a version of one of the things we had online was actually not the most recent version. So if we did have some kind of versioning software, particularly for policies, it'd be nice to know that we're always working with the most current draft or working finalized document version.
Counselor Pack.
I'd like to agree with Counselor Highslop that committee populating is an important component of understanding what the committees are all about. So how many members of council, how many members of the public, whether they're our staff members, what a quorum is, if the quorum is required for any decision-making reports sent to council. Those are details that are very helpful and they were the first things I looked for when I was deciding or doing my homework about deciding to run to council. I looked at those documents for that information. Gives the public a sense of what councilors do for their work if it says on a committee roster that councilors are members of these committees. So how it gets added? If it's just a matter of changing a policy in the future, why can't we get it all looked after sooner than later? Is what I would hope would happen and that we could agree upon.
Okay, it's interesting. We just went through this at the C R S E and the motion to adopt the strategic plan. There were some changes put forth and they were good changes. But they could either, they could either do two things. Either pass the strategic plan as it was. They could either postpone it. By postpone it, they have to give a date when they're going to vote on it again. So there had to be a date included. Or they could vote it through and make changes as they go. Because like they explained, it's a living document. So you can change things. You know, there's going to be changes as time goes on to our policies and to our bylaws, unfortunately, because that's just the way life is. So we can either vote it through tonight and make changes later on or we can postpone it to a date that we can have the changes in by and vote on it again. But that's up to what this council wants to do.
Yeah, I would like, personally, I would like to see this continue through tonight and then we'll work on to see where things should lie on it because it might not be one session. As we've seen already in the past, we thought back in February, the first time that this has come to council, that it might have been something that we could easily do in one night. But here we are, four months later, and we're still working on the same document. Let's get one version that's put through. We can continue the discussion in a living document and see where it goes next. Maybe there'll be other changes to it. Like if everybody comes to the working session with your thinking caps on and your suggestion's ready to go, then we can all work on it together at that meeting.
Okay, any other questions?
I would prefer it to be one more month so that we can look at it with our procedural bylaws, so that we can reflect whether and where it should be, right? Whether some of this should be with our procedural bylaw or should all of it be with our procedural bylaw or a great deal of it? Because if you look at other municipalities' bylaws, procedural bylaws, the actual standing committees and committees are in their bylaws. So I would prefer us one more kick at the can before we approve it. That would be me.
Counselor Sepp.
I actually, yeah, thank you very much, Chair. I actually came in different, I didn't know how I was going to vote on this one because there was a few things I heard that was changes. I didn't know what they were. I was kind of thinking like Counselor McKenzie at the beginnings, like, bah, you know, we can always make it work and make it happen. But I think that goes to the point. I think we should be slow, steady, and get it right. We've got till two, June two thousand fifteen without a change. Oh, sorry, two thousand twenty-three, June fifteen, two thousand twenty-three without a change. Surely to gosh, we could wait one more month if we can get an even more perfect document. And then if we should make a change. But I actually have to review with Counselors Dr. Pack and Counselors Highslop that let's take the time and just get it done right.
Okay, it's Counselor McKenzie's motion, so I'm gonna put it on him. What does he want to do?
I believe we're still to vote, actually.
I'd like to continue to the vote, actually.
Okay, that's what I'm asking. It's his motion and it's on the file. He can either postpone it or continue on the vote. So we will continue on the vote. So everybody's had their say. So all those in favor of amending the committee policy, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those contrary minded?
No.
So we got four or three. And I will request the clerk to make the ayes and the nays. And the motion is carried. Correspondents, we didn't have any other correspondence and when I entered into today that I had the letters from the Guinness Cooper and the letters from local government and that will be entered into our correspondence.
I do have a question about procedure there, that's okay. Is this an appropriate time to do it or should it wait in management session? Because we received a letter to the club written to council. I happened to have been C C'd on it. We just didn't get it and.
I was going to wait because I thought this was a pretty packed agenda. I was gonna put it on the next meeting.
Okay.
Was that about the garbage?
Yes.
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 Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so meetings and special events, item thirteen, Mayor's Report. Everybody receive a copy of that? Any questions? I suppose we'll get a motion on the board first. Can I have a motion to receive the Mayor's Report, please?
I move to receive the Mayor's Report.
Okay, any questions, comments?
Just one quick note. It'd be nice if, I mentioned this sort of a one to have it on the record. I'd love to have the references for all the pictures that were in the strategic plan of, from Capitol Regional Service Commission. There's some great pictures in that strategic report. It's a long report and it's a lot in. But the pictures really caught my eye. I'm very curious as to where they were. But there was no references in the guide as to where they were or who took them.
Not fair enough. I can request that that should not be difficult to do. Somebody took the pictures, they must know where they took them.
Yeah, perfect, yeah, thanks. Just, it's a minor thing, just very curious, right?
That's kind of neat. They were nice pictures, so we could have known where they come from. Yeah, Counselor Pack.
Did we consider the reports from the R C N P as part of your Mayor's Report? Or was that additional information?
That would be part of my Mayor's Report.
Okay, so I could ask you about those a little bit?
You can, whether I can answer them or not.
I just hope everyone's aware that our mayor is our representative on the Community Policing Committee.
Yeah, just a quick change on that. It's no longer the Community Policing Committee, it's the Public Safety Committee.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So you've told me that already and I forgot.
Oh, yeah, but it's new, right? It's the same with trying to get your handle around the, from the all R S E eleven of the Capitol Regional Service Commission. So take your time.
Thank you. So I mentioned during the management meeting about the concerns of residents in Ward Five in particular. But it seems to me, now that I've spoken with the R C N P twice, that it's bigger. It is, the bulk of concerns are in our area of the Capitol Region. But there are concerns for thefts of vehicles and personal property throughout the region. And I had a call last night to ask if we can, either in conjunction with the R C N P or knowing through the reporting we got from their quarterly releases, if we can make a concerted effort for public awareness of how, as a resident, I or any of our residents can safeguard their property. There have been quite good directives for the public of how to keep things safe and how, if there is an incident of that, incidence of that, to contact the R C N P. So could we have perhaps every other week a message on Facebook for the next couple of months?
We talked about bringing the R C N P in to give us a brief discussion on con prevention in our neighborhoods.
Yes.
So I think once we talk with the guys about that and then we can certainly put that information out either on our websites, on our Facebook, in our Hanwell Herald, our ways of communicating to the residents.
Did we hear back from the R C N P?
Uh, no, yeah, I've heard back from two of the people I contacted, one being the lady, the Robles Arshino from Tourism. She's willing to come and do a presentation for us. And I also talked to.
Sergeant Lozong, who is, as we've dealt.
Yeah, he's our, or, yeah, he's our new guy in here. So it's just a matter of contacting him. He hasn't called me back yet, so I'll contact him, get a time and date when he come in, put a presentation on to council.
It'd be kind of simple, though, to just tap a little message. It's on the Safe Communities and Neighborhoods Already website from the provincial government. So if we just, I'd be willing to help draft short little paragraphs to a month of them. Would that be all right with everybody or?
I agree. In the meantime, like while we're waiting for the R C N P to come in, it might be a good idea because theft is becoming more and more.
Oh, yeah, you had a screw.
So I think it's a great idea.
Because that's the first question people are asking me. What is council doing about this? And when the reply is, Hanwell Rural Community contracts policing services to the R C N P, well, that's not acceptable. We pay our taxes.
I agree.
And so.
We are accountable.
A little bit of education would be seen as proactive, I think.
As long as the information we put out there is, you know.
I can plagiarize for the best of them. Good for you. So it'll just be cut and paste from the source.
Right, like you said.
And surely they won't get mad at us.
I don't think they would. I think they'd appreciate spreading their information, you know, to our residents. Again, as long as it's factual, we gotta kind of just want to be careful what we put out there. Yep, Counselor McKenzie.
Just one minor correction there, more so for the recording. Everyone that's listening to this, that the municipality doesn't actually contract it. The province does. So we just pay into the provincial contract. Some municipalities do have individual contracts to the R C N P, like Ormokto and I think Sacville and, because a couple others. We don't. So there's not really a lot of direct accountability as there would be with, say, Ormokto, where they actually do direct reports. They work with people, interact directly. We have to do everything really through administrative politics.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's a very good point. Because like I said, we're, we're in the provincial, the provincial umbrella for policing. We don't have individual, you know, detachment here that reports to us that we hire directly. That's a really good point. Thank you for bringing that up.
Pay a lot for it, though.
Oh, yeah, yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
So that motion's still on. Do I, yeah.
Call a question?
Yeah, that was the questions. Any other questions?
We have to vote on your.
Yeah, you have to call a question.
Yeah, so all those in favor accept the Mayor's Report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Thank you, counsel. Committee reports, age friendly did not meet. Communications and economic development did not meet. And we have an emergency measures report.
What's the emergency measures report?
Correct secondary? Okay, all those in favor of receiving the emergency measures committee report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Good, motion carried. Finance did not meet. We have a governance and policies report.
What's the emergency governance policies report is presented?
We have a secondary by Counselor Pack.
Oh, I wanted to ask a question.
Oh, okay, I need a secondary. You can second it.
Okay.
Yeah, then you can question. Then I'll call for questions. There we go.
Thank you. I'm new, maybe new, you won't allow that. It's almost six months. So would we have a date in your mind for the next governance committee meeting?
Well, staff's away for the next two weeks, so definitely we probably sometime in July. Will it be before the next council meeting? I'm not sure. I'll have to talk to staff, see what we can work out in their schedule. We definitely want staff there when they come back.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor of adopting the governance and policies committee report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you.
I have a quick question, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Just on the committee reports in general. So we have down age friendly did not meet, communications did not meet, economic development did not meet. Can we either put there has not been struck yet or?
Yes, we can.
Mactacquack Community Liaison Committee did not meet, meets quarterly. Those kind of things, because it just does not give a really good perception to the public that we're not meeting, it seems like we're not doing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can, yeah.
Good idea, good point.
That'll be changed.
Thank you.
So Parks and Recreation did not meet. Mactacquack Community Liaison Committee.
Well, it's speaking June twenty-second. It's coming right up. The Mactacquack Community Liaison Committee. If any of you have anything you would like me to take to that committee meeting, I would be pleased to do so on your calendar.
And that's open to the public too, if they want to contact you.
Yes.
Yes, so they can certainly contact Counselor Pack for any questions, concern they have with the Mactacquack Community Liaison Committee.
Yes. And the last report was from June, March, it's on the website of Hanwell Rural Community, if people are interested.
Okay, very good.
Really good information.
Certainly, good point.
And the next one will be there too, soon as I'm ready.
Excellent. Okay, moving on to item fifteen, C A O Treasures Report. We have no report for this month. The E sixteen is the older Antiny's Business, the Little Recreation Building. There's no update. Rural Plan Progress Report.
I didn't get one.
Didn't, there's nothing for them. I know it's being worked on. That's something R S E eleven is working, trying to get rural plans together.
I talked to Lonnie about that today.
Yeah.
Probably July will be when things start slowing down for them. Be something going with that, I'm not sure you will have that tomorrow, anyway.
Question. So the Recreation Building, have you heard back from the auditor yet?
We did. We did, I'm gonna get later back to work. We're still having, you know, we still, she kind of told us basically what the question, the questions we have. We still have questions around using gas tax money and how we're going to formally the committee for that.
So you're able to or not able to?
We are, it still seemed very unclearly. Probably not, if you do a non-profit, what do you mean? How to interpret that letter?
I, I read it as no.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't want to go to the municipality, correct? Us being.
Yes, but, well, she did say, but she, it mentioned being an active project of the community, that we could get grants, I wonder if the grants would come from gas tax. So we might have to sit down and figure again the most efficient way to work this. In the meantime, we do have a budget for the summer, and we will look at, doors sealed up and the windows, something done and maybe painted over the summer.
Do council need?
We, yeah, we're, at the process, we had a budget for that.
Okay. Sorry. Counselor Pack.
Excuse me, for item B, the Rural Plan Progress Report. I spoke with Capital Region Service Commission. The Kingsclare portion of the rural plan was drafted in 2008, and that was after three, four years of struggle to get agreement amongst community members. So let's just take the 2008 date and the awareness that the Capital Region Service Commission understands the rural plans for each municipality in the region. They have until 2028 to get them done. So that would mean 20 years.
So it's going to be done this summer.
So how do we know that, though? Has a committee been struck? Who's, who's the chair for the committee for Hanwell Rural Community?
Well, we've been talking about this, because the Hanwell Rural Plan has been due to be redone for three years, and it's been put off, put off because of this reform, because of COVID. And then once this reform came along, we have been talking to them. They do, like I said, they're almost really the lead on this, they, they, they know the bylaws of, of both, you know, places. And so there will be a committee from residents and people from Hanwell.
And Kingsclare?
Council. And council, yes. Now, I have volunteered to chair, I did that months ago, and we've been just kind of waiting to see.
So did you decide that yourself?
Can I, can I, can I speak on that?
Sure.
In the committee policy, the Rural Plan Review Committee?
Yes.
We have to pass this so that we can make that committee.
Okay.
They're looking for that committee. Like, they're.
Yes.
Actually waiting to have that committee so that they can start doing the, getting the public, getting the, because they want public involved, they want councils involved, so they can start doing, getting everybody together to start discussing the plans. Yeah, so that's all I have to say.
You know, this is a great discussion, there's a point where we really should have suspended the rules to be moving forward with this discussion, without having a motion to have somehow report to, report on.
Sure. It should have been.
Shouldn't, this should, this was very ahocing.
Yep.
Out of, out of band.
But something we'll have to do is come up with a committee for the rural plan.
That's all I'm, there should be a committee that's chosen, rather than, pardon my criticism, but I feel that's important, that it's not assumed who is the chair.
It wasn't assumed, actually, we discussed it several months ago, whatever, anyway.
Okay, let's, let's get back, let's get back on track.
Anyone who wants to be chair, can certainly be chair.
Okay, moving on, new business, item A is the 10th Anniversary Committee, we need a motion and a secondar.
I have a statement to make over that.
Okay.
For the public. Hanwell Rural Community was first incorporated in 2014, which means that next year, 2024, will mark its 10 year as a municipality. Indeed, discussions have favored a year-long celebration instead of just the actual date in 2024, the 10-year mark. A committee of council and residents will be formed, that was discussed at the last management meeting, and start planning in September, and the committee will be a special committee, and once we get the committee policy figured out, we'll be able to talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you. So do we need a motion to strike this committee?
I, I believe.
Don't we?
I believe you may want to do that, Councilor Dr. Pack.
I felt that that wouldn't happen until September, when we had the committee policy approved.
This is just a reaction to make, have the committee made, strike the committee?
To make the public aware that a committee will be struck in September.
This, what part of the motion, that we call a notice of motion. So she's just making the public aware that in the future date, there'll be a motion to strike the committee.
Okay, so we don't need one, okay.
Okay, we're good.
If she doesn't feel that there's a need to do it this time, she can just consider a notice of motion.
Yeah, thank you for the terminology.
Okay. Moving on to item B is a mutual aid agreement between the fire services of Hanwell and the city of Fredericton. For a number of years now, we were outside the purview of a mutual aid agreement with the city of Fredericton. They did have an agreement with the former RALSD of Kingsclare. Since a few months back, we did have a meeting, and the fire chiefs and the administration of the city of Fredericton had put forth a mutual aid agreement. So basically, by signing this agreement, we would now be covered under Fredericton for mutual aid. So I'd need a, basically I need a motion and to approve this mutual aid agreement.
Well, I think that we approve mutual aid agreement drafted June?
June 2023.
2023, sure.
Second.
Secondar. Any concerns?
I, I have a question, and certainly no, I don't have any expertise at all, speaking this at all, I just know this one thing that I assume is a typo in per 11.9. The last sentence says, is fully agreed by the parties that they shall pack their own costs of any, I assume it's supposed to be paid.
Which one is that?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
More patch, should be paid?
I'll let, I'll let them know.
Yeah, okay. The cost is 20 grand, but we're gonna go with 30, eh? Ah, no.
Yeah. I pointed to their last one.
Okay, did I have a secondar?
Yes.
Okay, so any other questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you. And we'll get this into Fredericton, so we can present it to the council. Do you have a copy of that? Okay, item C is amendments to policy complaint and conflict resolution procedure policy 2022-08.
Okay, this is gonna be following, okay, I move to adopt the amendments to policy number 2022-08, complaint and conflict resolution procedure policy.
I'll second it.
Okay, questions, concerns, comments?
I have a couple. So under section four, sanctions and consequences, staff, it says, it states that should breach of the intuitions that have occurred, consequences for said breach will be actioned or actioned by the clerk, CAO, following the rural community of Hanwell Human Resources Policy when approved. So this has been in that document for over a year, four years, and I really feel it needs to be removed, as the HR policy is really not forthcoming. Originally, when this was voted on, it was under the understanding that the HR policy was going to be imminent, and it really isn't. I don't know when we will have that HR policy any longer, so I really don't feel that that should be in there. The other thing that, again, under section three, it states dismissal from council with the seat being declared vacant at the next regular session of council. So the Local Government Act does speak to this, and it clearly states the reasons how a vacancy occurs and how a seat can be declared vacant, and this is not one of them. So I contacted local government on this matter and was told, again, this, under this Local Governance Act, there is no authority to remove someone from office and declare a seat vacant. It is not allowable. So I honestly can't support the amendment to the complaint conflict resolution policy.
Any other questions, concerns?
I, I do have something, but I, if Counselor Seck wants to say something.
Joe Rocker, I'll let you decide, me first or you first, it's whatever you rather. You go ahead. I said a lot of what I was going to say here earlier, but there's a couple of points I do want to point out. And I'd like to point on what Counselor Dr. Pack brought up, where definition of sanity is doing this over and over and over, and our points noted. And for those who haven't been here since I started, the first time I started with the code of conduct was July 2015, July 15th, 2021. The first time a code of conduct was brought up to me was even before I sworn in. I ran because there was process where I was threatened to be sued if I talked about the community even before I was running. I got threatened again for a code of conduct in November 2022, October 2022, just for trying to follow the process and been threatened a bit more times. November 4th, when I finally, when I shared what the motion was coming forward, it was the final straw, I broke. I have offered off-ramp, after off-ramp, after off-ramp, let's rescind it, the public showed up and asked everybody, let's just calm our jets, and I'm willing to calm my jets, when you fellows start showing me that you're gonna start calming yours, and I recognize I'm being a pig headed here, I get your point, it's not lost on me, Counselor Dr. Pack. But I'm standing up on principle, because my kids have to see that you gotta stand up when right is right. Some of the things that I've been fighting against, and I'm sorry, Counselor McKenzie, you're right here, but I saw the email thread where you stated to the mayor, what's $10,000 more for the solar system? It's worth it, we owed them. If you listen to your response, and I had it recorded in January 2022, this was a new solar project, so I'm bringing up, why do we spend more than we budgeted? Why do we do this? Why do we solar source it? It's okay if we make mistakes, but we have to own our mistakes. Bill 45 is imminent. It's coming. If the government holds, passes today, because we lost a minister who just resigned. But it is imminent, it's coming. The last date for the amendment was June 8th. They're not changing anything major on it, they're focusing on other things. Patience. It's coming, and it's my thing that I have looking forward to it. And I'm hoping that when the province steps in, and by the way, when we went to the Silk Cult third-party investigator, which it wasn't that fast, it was the agent of the first, I, I cooled my jets then, too, let's see what this is going on. But immediately when I spoke to the third-party investigator, I sent the on-site the note. And I know there's notes here sent by the other one to you fellows, but I haven't heard it this way. So my ask is, Bill 45 is coming, I'll calm my jets, if you fellows calm your jets, while Bill 45 comes out and handles this issue, because they'll even handle the fiscal side of it, which will save a lot more money. Are you? Thank you.
Counselor McKenzie.
Some valid points, by the way. I, I, I do think that we're well past the point that Bill 45 would have any benefit to us. So just for the sake of the public and everybody else, I'm gonna have to prepare a small statement, it's not overly large. It addresses some of the points that were brought up tonight. So just bear with me for a couple minutes here. So a history of how we got to this point. So after the municipality's act was replaced with the Local Governance Act in 2017, the new act defined section 10 to that the local government shall make bylaws establishing a code of conduct for members of council prescribed a regulation. Our initial code of conduct bylaw was largely taken from another existing municipality within New Brunswick, I can't recall which one, but I think it was Sackville. And at that time, we didn't focus a lot of attention on it because we naively assumed it was unlikely to ever be used. Unfortunately, not long after, it was used for the first time. After an investigation of that person by council, a breach was determined to have occurred, sanctions were issued to the respondent. Unfortunately, much like today, these sanctions were completely ignored. After it was determined that we needed more help with the code of conduct bylaw, it was sent to our legal team to be rewritten. Large portions of it were rewritten, and they informed us that it would be best to break the actual investigation and sanctions portion off into a policy, as a policy would be easier to correct in the event it was needed to do so, like now. So splitting off the policy was under the recommendation and review of legal. There is nothing in the existing bylaw that locks the current version of either outside of the standard process of bylaw amendment, which is three readings, or policy update, which is a single motion. Section 17F in particular states complaints shall be dealt with by council in accordance with the process set out in the Conflict and Complaint Resolution Procedure Policy. The current bylaw and policy were adopted under unanimous votes at council in May of 2022. And now here we are again, in a similar situation, finding that a previous policy was, again, not sufficient to resolve an issue, though to be honest, there was no way predict the council as a whole could ever be put in the position that it is in now. As far as Bill 45 goes, we are way past the point that the Local Governance Commission, as is currently written after second reading, would be able to resolve this issue in any way. As far as the constitutionality of dismissal goes, a councillor was dismissed from Dalhousie in 2018 under section 50 of the Local Governance Act, and another councillor was dismissed from St. John in 2021 under section 50 of the Local Governance Act. Neither of these cases were challenged as unconstitutional. If we reach out even further, just within Atlantic Canada, a councillor from the town of Cupids was dismissed in 2017 under the Newfoundland and Labrador Municipal Affairs Act, which is that province's equivalent to our Local Governance Act. Six years have passed since that time, and there has been no constitutional challenge. And a further note is that dismissal in Newfoundland was actually done by the minister, though their laws are slightly different than our Local Governance Act here. Municipalities are incorporated entities, and they exist at the whim of the provincial government. As we saw with local government reform in 2022, incorporated entities can be dissolved with all elected officials being dismissed, forced to rerun if they want to try to win back their seat in the new entity, once again with no constitutional challenges being made, and I'm aware of at least. You do have a constitutional right to run to be a councillor for your community, but you do not have the right to remain as one. I believe that we as a council are on strong legal ground to proceed with the changes being recommended by the Governance Policy Committee, which, who in turn have received these recommendations from an independent, somewhat, or third party that is an expert in this field. Please do not let comments from the public intimidate you in walking away from your duty as stated directly in section seven of the Local Governance Act, and confirmed tonight by a letter from the minister, or legal. And I quote, "The powers of the local government under this or any other act shall be interpreted broadly in order to provide broad authority to the council to enable it to govern the affairs of the local government as it considers appropriate, and to enhance the council's ability to respond to issues in local government." I had another comment to that from, I can't remember what it was, memory's really faded already.
May I rebut, and let me come back to you?
Possibly, you sure? If it's up to the chair.
Actually, it's up to you if you.
I, I'm, I'm done, so it's up to the chair.
And it would be up to me, so if you have an additional comment?
I just have a rebut to that statement, if that's okay.
I will allow it.
Thank you. So I believe that 2015, and I understand what you're saying, the constitutional challenge of it, and I actually heard, talked, a couple lawyers talked to me about that case in 2015 in Dalhousie, she didn't have the money to go to court to take it. And just when I'm speaking to the provincial parity, by the way, one, the minister at land pointed out, you could always hire a lawyer, and I reminded him, sure, it's going to cost $60,000 to take you fellows to court. I'd argue, I think I'll win, I've talked to a lawyer, I believe I'll win, shouldn't anybody who believes that, I'm sure you fellows believe the same way, if you're gonna go to court, I'm not trying to dismiss, there's one right over another in this case. That being said, though, in that case of 2015, when you make $1,000 a month, the return on investment isn't there, and you only get 50 to 80% of your legal fees back, and that's why it isn't being challenged. I will, for sure, be fundraising to challenge this one, because there's right and there's wrong. Second, I don't know about the 2021 one, I'd like some information on that one, because I'm not aware of that one specifically. As for the, you're saying that you received expert advice on this, you spoke to somebody and they gave you the expert advice?
It came from, may I, Mr. Chair?
Oh, sorry, my, my apology, Chair, I should have been speaking to you, not to Counselor McKenzie, that was my, my fault.
That's quite all right, these are, yeah, trying times. Go ahead, Counselor McKenzie.
Yeah, we all did, we received the advice from the independent third.
So it's from the document?
It's from the document, correct. These were the suggestions that were written from the document of what we should do to amend our policy bylaws.
That's correct.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, thank you, yeah, no, it's good. No, that's it, I can't remember what it was.
Counselor Fox.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We are required by the province to have a code of conduct for members of council. That code of conduct provides for a complaint conflict resolution procedure policy that sets out sanctions for any councillor who breaches the code of conduct. Most sanctions rely on the goodwill of the councillor who is being sanctioned to comply with the sanctions. This is based on the premise that, once a councillor has been found to be in breach of the code of conduct by council, they will accept this decision and comply willingly. As a member of council, we are all required to accept decisions made by council, even if we personally disagree with that decision, and even if that decision impacts us directly. Since our inception as a rural community just nine years ago, I'm aware of more than one case where a councillor has been sanctioned and has simply ignored the sanctions. Why would the province of New Brunswick require us to have a code of conduct bylaw if it cannot be enforced? What purpose does a code of conduct bylaw have? If not to ensure that councillors behave according to the code of conduct? A councillor found in breach of the code of conduct and sanctioned for that breach should not, in my humble opinion, be able to simply ignore the will of council, simply because they disagree with the decision of council. Something has to be done moving forward to give some teeth to the policy so that future councils don't have to deal with the same kind of situation. The turmoil and toxicity in the work environment caused by a councillor who is unrepentant can be devastating. We have to think about the impact on staff and on other councillors. In fact, we have a responsibility to our staff to ensure that they have a safe and healthy work environment. And given that this is not the first time that a councillor is chosen to ignore the sanctions against them, I believe much stronger sanctions are necessary as a last resort, and as a last resort. Therefore, I will be voting in favor of the motion.
Thank you, Counselor Fox. Any other comments? Okay, I'll call for the question, all those in favor. Of the Amendment to Policy Complaint and Conflict Resolution Policy number 2022-08, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded?
Nay.
Okay, so we have two nays, and we pour the other way. All right, so motion is carried. Okay, moving on to item D, asset disposal. So I take it we have an asset to dispose of?
I have no info.
The chipper. We've talked about it, the management.
Oh, okay, there was no info in the package.
Yeah, I forgot to put it. So basically, we, somebody's offered to purchase a chipper, if we want to sell the chipper, we could sell it.
What's the offer for?
I don't know that at this point.
We have, I think we.
We just have to authorize, we could get it.
Just, yeah, like, it's not gonna be used, it's, yeah, so I think it's time for it to go.
Motion, I move to authorize the clerk to be able to sell the wood chipper.
Second.
Any question, any questions, concerns, comments?
I like the chipper.
Counselor Peck?
Okay, so if we dispose of this chipper, there are two concerns I have. Is it an as-is, where-is sort of situation, that doesn't take some liability for the rural community of Hanwell with it, such that if a person operates it and is injured, we aren't responsible? How do we ensure that?
I think we would have to write that up in the middle of sale.
That would be very nice, could we be sure?
That's a real good point to bring up, that if something happens to the individual that purchases it, we don't wanna be on the hook for the, for the damages, so I think that would have to be written in the middle of sale.
Yeah, good idea.
Any ideas on how we're gonna dispose of it? We have one interested party, should we advertise it to see if there's any more than any other party?
That's really big, clerks, yeah, it's operational, it's operational, we're just authorizing, get rid of the blah thing and.
Okay.
I have a second question.
Sure.
So I'm looking ahead until, until we get the environmental stewardship committee, or what Mr. Divenford referred to as the sustainability committee. And I'm thinking about the efforts of dealing with low downs in our park. And current practice, which could be examined a bit more carefully in provincial parks and other municipal parks, is to, where it is woodland and a trail going through it, move the debris that is causing disruption to users further into the woods, or chip it and leave it in place. That is the ecological way to go about this. So how do we get a chipper to replace this chipper, if we adopt that practice?
That's, that's a good question, because basically, we, if we're going to be cleaning up through the park, we, we need a chipper. Maybe we just need a motion of council later on to buy a more modern, and maybe what staff would consider a safer chipper.
So come budget time, we'll remember that.
We could just add this to it.
Or rent it.
Or rent it.
Rent it, that way we don't have that asset.
Yeah, that's a good idea, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
We're good with those details.
Counselor Fox, I believe you had a comment, no? So no other questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded?
I like the chipper.
Does she know? She say no?
Yeah, she said no, yeah.
I said keep it, we need a chipper.
Yeah, motion carried. Okay, procedure bylaw, deputy mayor. This is, this is where, yeah, okay, so I'm going to add, again, our bylaw says we have to, the deputy mayor's position is for a two-year period, so at the end of the two-year period, after that, deputy mayor has moved along, and if that time is expired, we will ask to nominate a new deputy mayor. Now that we have nominations, there's nothing saying that the old deputy mayor can't reoffer, so I'm going to call for nominations from the floor for deputy mayor, and then we'll continue on with the vote.
I'd like to nominate Susan Jonah to continue as deputy mayor.
Okay, we'll write that.
This is a point of information too, I'm not sure, can't remember who called it out, but our bylaw says we do it by ballot, we're not allowed to do that.
No.
It has to be, we talked of, Sherry put out a note that we have to do it by, by motion. Is there any other nominations for deputy mayor?
I'll nominate Tim Fox.
Oh, decline.
That's perfectly legitimate, we have a nomination, we have a decline.
I'll nominate Dr. Counselor Peck.
Well, for the purpose of the public, seeing that we are doing this, I will accept acknowledging the excellent work of the existing deputy mayor and noting she is also someone you could vote for.
So you're, you're gonna run for deputy mayor? That's my understanding?
Yes, to the nomination.
Okay, so is there any other nominations from the floor for deputy mayor? Okay, so now we'll call for a vote. And we've done this by ballot before, not by open, so correct me if I'm wrong, but I'd have to ask all those in favor of having Counselor, or Deputy Mayor Jonah continue on as deputy mayor, please signify.
Who goes first, though, so that's flip the coin, I'm pointing, that's flip the coin again. I don't either, I don't know.
Who carries money?
Could it also be your bonker?
Pardon?
Will I be accused of precop?
Yeah, oh, that's a two-sided coin.
Yeah, well, you gotta check the coin.
I'm not flipping the coin.
I'll flip the coin.
Exactly, it's buried, the use of money.
I bet something is not in the box, because I don't, I don't bring my wallet with it. So I'm gonna flip the coin.
We get heads or tails first.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna do that, but after, I decide who gets heads or tails, who gets the pick first?
Gets the pick what first?
I say the deputy mayor should have first choice.
Okay, deputy mayor, you would like, and this is just to go for the vote.
Right.
Yeah, we're not flipping for deputy mayor. Or I might, I might get flipped.
I would say you're waiting.
Okay, so you would like to be?
Tails.
Tails, that leaves you with heads, so the, in the head, or the coin is one head, one tail, just to everybody's acknowledgement.
Before you look at it, it's who goes first, right? Who votes first?
This is, this is the flip, who goes first. So I'm gonna drop it in front of Sherry, and she can read it.
Who was what again?
I'm tails.
You said tails?
No, I said tails.
She's tails.
Okay, it says.
So we're gonna call for the vote for deputy mayor, for Counselor Peck first. So all those in favor of having Counselor Peck to be appointed as deputy mayor, please signal, or please raise their hand.
So do you vote for your son?
You can, yes.
Okay, so we have three votes for Counselor Peck for deputy mayor.
Yeah.
Now, all those in favor of having the former deputy mayor, Susan Jonah, continue on as deputy mayor for a second term, please raise their hands. So I have four people voting for former deputy mayor Jonah, and three people voting for Counselor Peck for deputy mayor.
Return the term to former, it's opposed to old.
Yeah, well, I'm very, I'm very careful there.
Oh, you mentioned that first.
So with the vote being four to three, I will declare Deputy Mayor, former Deputy Mayor Jonah now as the new deputy mayor for the next two years. Thank you both.
And I think that's really important, because it's in the bylaw to do this, and it's important that we do it.
We just had to correct the procedure for it, that's all, when it goes back to the session.
Hundred percent.
To a call.
And thank you guys for stepping up to put your name forward.
Normally, it should be, it should be half the term, because it's put to, it's two years, when they're always four-year terms, and now you've got five-year terms.
Let the record show, I have returned the count to Counselor Peck.
Should say halfway, halfway point, because your terms are.
Yeah, it's, hopefully there'll never be a five-year term going forward again, but we.
But we had two in the last ten years, so I think halfway would be.
I'd like to be done with it.
All right. So I need a motion to appoint Counselor Jonah as deputy mayor.
I'll move to appoint Counselor Deputy, Counselor Susan Jonah as deputy mayor, as per bylaw, zero one, twenty fourteen.
Do I have a second there? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Motion carried unanimously, thank you very much, council. Okay, moving on, our upcoming activities, as everybody knows, Zoomers again, our Tuesdays and Thursdays at twelve P M. Hannwell Sports Registration is currently open, open, and from what I hear, in the neighborhood is going quite well. Kudos to Jared, he's doing an excellent job from what I hear. The Upper Kingslayer Fire Department sixtieth anniversary celebration is on July the eighth, so that's just around the corner. And item D is Hannwell Sizzling Summer Social, July twenty-ninth, rain date the thirtieth. And that's gonna be, that's gonna be an interesting social, no question about that. So I need a motion, we're gonna win to closed session, so I need a motion to win to closed session, please.
I move to go into closed session.
No, dismiss the public, thank you.
Yes, we will, but after, after we get a motion in.
No.
No, dismiss first.
Okay, we will dismiss the public at this time before we go into closed session. Thank you for showing up.
Ms. Mark?
Okay, now we need a motion to win to closed session.
I move to go into closed session.
I'll second.
All those in favor, any questions, comments to go into closed session? Not those in favor of going into closed session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? We are now in closed session, motion carried.
I move to command a closed session.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Motion carried, we are now back in open session.
Would you like the motion to extend the meeting past nine P M?
I'll second.
Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we will extend the motion to extend past nine P M, it's been carried, so now we'll need a motion to go back into closed session.
No, no, let's go back, motion to go back in closed session.
I'll second.
Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Great, we are now back in closed session. Okay, need a motion to go back to closed session, please.
I move that we come out of closed session and go into open session.
Any questions? All those in favor of going back into open session by coming out of closed session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you. Now, we have, need a motion for, to continue with the proposed, or multipurpose hard surface for the land, we have a landscaping estimate, so we need a motion on approving the landscaping estimate on their multipurpose hard surface.
I move to accept the quote from Turf Works in the amount of fifty-two thousand nine hundred dollars plus H S T for their multipurpose courts.
Second.
Any questions, concerns, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you. Item two, or motion two, for the?
Grading.
The grading of the T-ball field at Brookdale Park.
I move to authorize and direct the clerk to accept the quote from Eugene Henry in the amount of five thousand dollars plus H S T for the grading of the T-ball field at Brookdale Park.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you. And our last motion, or our second last motion actually of the day, is the accessibility trail, we have some damage there, and we had a quote from the contractor that put it in originally to fix the trail, so I need a motion to, for A R P to repair the rubber ized surface.
Just to be clear, I'm not necessarily agreeing to the, this motion is just to authorize the clerk, it's not necessarily a tiny to a quote. I move to authorize the clerk to spend up to twenty-five thousand dollars plus H S T